All right. Good evening, everyone. A call to meeting to order. Meeting of the Congress Select Board for Tuesday, June 6, 2023. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media Channel 15. And will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube for as soon as possible. There are openings in several committees. Please refer to the front page on our website for a listing and application. If we could all stand further.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our community prayer. Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our communities. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. Way we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us to achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek. And keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Amen.
Prior to the start of our meeting tonight, I just wanted to acknowledge and remember some notable citizens who passed in the last couple of weeks. And at the end, I'd ask for a moment of silence and remembrance of all of them. First was Reverend Bob Merritt. Reverend Merritt served the town and community in many, many ways. And just a few examples. He served three terms on this very Board of Selectmen. He was the minister at United Parish. He was chaplain for the Carver Fire Department. And he was co-founder of Habitat for Humanity of Greater Plymouth. And he served in many other ways as well. Obviously Shane McCulgan. Shane was the founder of Shane Gives Thanks Food Pantry. And Shane's belief was that no one should go without. And finally, our police chief, Mark Doofly, lost his dad, Raymond. And I would ask for a moment of silence and remembrance of all those folks. Thank you. All right. Our first item on the agenda this evening, as always, is citizen participation. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board this evening? Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. I'm Paul Johnson, president of Carver Sportsman's Club. Tonight, we'd like to announce the resumption of our annual scholarship breakfast after a pause driven by the COVID virus. This year will be our 20th year hosting the event. The club continued the scholarships during the break because we felt that supporting the education of our youth is the most important thing we do as a community. Our scholarships are a partnership between the club and our business community who provide additional support through scholarships on our ads on our placemat. We're grateful to the businesses for their enthusiastic response to the return of the scholarship drive. This year's breakfast will be on Saturday, June 24, from 7:30 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. We hope to see a large contingent of our fellow citizens on the 24th. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Are there any other members of the public who would like to address the board? All right, seeing none. The first scheduled item on our agenda is a 6:10 public hearing for a poll. It's not 6:10 yet. We also have a public hearing at 6:15. So why don't we skip to our 6:25 agenda item, which is a meeting with Town Council, KP Law, to discuss fees and legal services and possible vote to approve the KP Law rate increase of $10 an hour to $235 an hour for general Town Council legal fees for fiscal year '24. Mr. Corbo, thank you once again for joining us.
Yes, thank you. Good evening through you, Mr. Chair. My name is Greg Corbo from the law firm of KP Law, Town Council, to the town of Carver, a position that I have held for more than 25 years now. I'm regretfully before you this evening to announce that we are increasing our hourly rate for general legal services from $225 an hour to $235 an hour. In looking back over our history with the town, I went back to the year 2000 when our rate was $120 an hour. And so over, you know, the past 20-plus years, you know, we've tried to keep our rates as low as we possibly can. We certainly understand, you know, the financial challenges that you face as a town and a community and, you know, you as a board that has to try to manage those challenges. But unfortunately, you know, we face many of those same challenges ourselves. And we have employees that have to be paid and overhead costs that are very significant and continue to increase at a rapid rate. And it's, you know, unfortunate. But, you know, we do, in order to meet our costs, have to increase the rates. And we are doing that across the board for all of our municipal clients. As we discussed when I was here last year, there are several different services that we're breaking out for special rates. Those include things like comprehensive permits under Chapter 40B, any sort of major overhaul of your general or zoning bylaws, cable television work, and bond council work. None of those rates are changing. Although, and I know there were a lot of questions about that last year, but honestly, I don't think you used any of those services, that everything that we did was at the general Town Council rates. And, you know, while the rate itself is going to go up, we're going to continue to work with you to, you know, make legal services as cost-effective as possible. You know, I was here a few months ago and I did a training, two trainings for all town officials with respect to the open meeting law and public records law. You know, we will continue to be proactive in working with boards and officials in trying to, you know, render decisions in a way that allows you to avoid being within litigation. And, you know, once we are within litigation, we try to manage that in a way that's within your best interests. And so we are here today asking that you approve that $10 an hour increase.
Thank you, Mr. Corbo. This was on a previous agenda, I think, two agendas ago. And there were some questions from the board, which is why we rescheduled it and asked Mr. Corbo to be here for this. He may have answered the board's questions. I don't know. But does anybody have questions for Mr. Corbo? Mr. Ryan?
Do we know how much the rates have increased over the last five to 10 years? Do we have a schedule for what it's been?
So I didn't break it down year by year. But as I said, so in 2000, the rate was $120 an hour. For fiscal year '23, which was last year, we went to $225. So that was about $100 an hour increase over the course of more than 20 years. And, you know, it didn't go up at a steady pace. You know, there were many years where it didn't change at all. You know, and if you think sort of back to like the recession of the early 2000s, that was a time where, you know, we were really leaving rates as they were. And, you know, and to be perfectly honest with you, we're getting sort of back to a pattern where rather than having bigger increases all at once, we're going to try to steadily increase the rates over time.
I think, if I may, Mr. Chair, there was a part of our minutes from last year was included here where Mr. Corbo goes over that particular point.
Well, Mr. Corbo?
Yeah, I've got a couple of different issues. One is separately, I guess, from the rate structure, I guess. Well, let me go back to the rate structure. Last year, like you said, they were low for a while. But last year, there was a big jump. It went up to $225. And I was under the impression that was to get us, you know, back to market. And now, a year later, it's going up another $10. Not a lot of money, but it just keeps going up. What I'm more concerned about is how the effect of any rate increase affects our current legal budget. Right now, we're at 144,000 actual to date on a budget of 110. And we've got May and June left to go. So we had 160 last year, and I don't know. Pick a number, 170, 180 this year. I don't know. So I think a whole review of our contract, what can we do to cut costs? You know, I think that needs to get reviewed before we're going to look at any increases. That's my two cents.
And, you know, and as far as the budget through you, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, as far as the budget is concerned, I mean, we do, we're mindful of that and we do try to work with you. But, you know, unfortunately, legal budget is a bit reactive, unlike some of the other budgets where, you know, you could sort of try to forecast what the expenses are going to be. Oftentimes, you know, your legal expenses come at things that are sort of thrust upon you and that you have no choice but to respond to. So, you know, this year in particular, there is a significant amount of litigation, you know, and issues with one board in particular. You know, town meeting tends to, you know, some years our town meeting is simpler than other years. This year, you know, town meeting was two nights. And there were a lot of weighty issues that needed to be addressed. But, you know, as I said, we're hopeful that, you know, with things like the trainings that we do, that even if the rate itself is going up, we can still try to keep you, you know, within a reasonable cost by working with you, you know, to try to avoid issues before they become issues. But sometimes things become issues and we can't help it. And when that happens, we do, you know, our best to represent the town in the most cost-effective way possible. And, you know, you do get the benefit of our experience. And, you know, when things come up, you know, they tend to have happened before in other communities. And we bring that experience with us. And we don't always have to reinvent the wheel every time one of these issues comes up.
And I think we talked last time about looking at, no offense, but other firms as well to get some kind of pricing comparison, again, in an effort to maintain service but lower costs. I don't think we've really touched upon that.
Well, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Mr. President.
A number of years ago, probably more than 10 years ago at this point, there was a committee that was established by the Select Board that did look at that. And by that committee's own criteria, KP Law was the only firm that actually fit the criteria that they requested. So that was, you know, that has been done, just so you know.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I was at that meeting. And there was an IRFP done. And there were multiple, I think, Mr. Johnson was on that subcommittee. I'm not sure if he's still here. But there were other alternatives. And the Select Board decided to stay with Copeland Page. That's what I recall.
That's not my memory. My memory was that they really were the only firm that fit all the criteria.
I'll agree to disagree.
Of that committee, not the Select Board's idea of that committee. Thank you.
I guess I would make a couple of points. Number one, if you wanted to, or if the board wanted to, I'm sure we could ask Mr. Fantasy to reach out to some town administrators and see what some towns are paying for their legal fees. But I guess for myself, you know, when we hire professional help, I want professional help that I think does the best job they can do. Certainly, that's how I want to hire my attorneys. I wouldn't hire attorneys for my office based on the lowest rate. And I don't want to hire attorneys for the town based on the lowest rate. I want to hire attorneys for the town that I think do the best job they can for the town. And just speaking for myself and the experience I've had, I think Copeland Page has done a good job for the town. I think they've been, I think they've done a good job. Whenever we reached out to Mr. Corbo, he's been here. And I think the other benefit they bring is because they've been dealing with the town of Carver for a long time. They're familiar with a lot of the issues that we bring to them. So when Mr. Fantasy reaches out and says, "We're having a problem with this or that," they don't have to spend a lot of time doing research because they're familiar with the issue already. They may have dealt with it before. So I think that may save us some money in the long term on the legal budget. So those are my thoughts on the issue.
Okay. I would just again reiterate that we've, I believe, so I was correct. It was 10 years ago when we did a, we looked at other firms. We haven't done anything for 10 years. Is that, maybe this is a question to Mr. Fantasy. Is that typical? Do you go 10 years without ever bidding out legal services or things like that?
Well, it depends on what the legal services you have. For a firm like Copeland Page, they have a breadth of expertise in a number of areas. It's not just one. Some hire specific attorneys just for litigation, some just for zoning matters. And then all of a sudden, you're getting this piecemeal of putting it together yourself. But a firm like Copeland Page has all the expertise in the firm. Like, we don't always deal with just Greg. We deal with other attorneys who have the expertise in what we're dealing with at the time. And I think we're in a situation now where we don't want to change pilots mid-flight. We've got a number of litigation issues going on. And I've been very satisfied with KP Law.
Mr. Ryan?
Mr. Chair. With respect to the budget for next year and the rate increase, will there be an issue, given the average hours that we usually get billed per year? Do we see any issues with the budget for next year?
Not an issue that we haven't been able to address in the past. So I don't see that being something that's going to put the town in bankruptcy, so to speak.
Well, go ahead.
Oh, I was going to say, so if we have a budget and the rate goes up and we end up running out of money in that budget, what happens?
Well, and that happens basically almost nearly every year. Then it's taken from other departments that have leftover monies or from other sources. Finance Committee has a reserve fund. And they oftentimes tap into that to pick up any overage. Because as Attorney Corbo said, if we knew exactly how many cases we have in a year, you'd be able to budget it. If you knew exactly how many issues you have and personnel matters and other things, you'd be able to budget it.
Right.
But it's just an overall budget. It's one of those ones that fluctuates.
Right.
So.
Okay. Well, again, not to be argumentative, but through you, Mr. Chairman, I'm just looking at again. We've got costs steadily increasing. $160 last year. It's going to be probably $170 this year. We put a budget out there of $140. Does anyone think we're going to be $140 next year with the way things are going on legal fees, just from a number of hours standpoint? I would highly doubt it.
So this being my first budget year here, $140 seemed like a target. That's what it was, I think, the year before, too. Did I know that we would have this many cases going on and the amount of litigation, the amount of open meeting law complaints or record requests and all those things? All that costs money when somebody has to review them. So will we be at $140 ever? Maybe not. Maybe that's, now it's time to jump the budget up to be able to cover that.
And again, I think Mr. Ryan used exactly the same analogy that I was going to use with the snow removal budget. It's unfortunate, I think, the legal budget is one of those things you can plug a number in. But it's really just the best estimate you can get. You really don't know what you're going to spend. And you could be close. You might not be close. You might need a transfer from some other source. But you just do the best you can.
Anyone else? Mr. Corbo, do you have anything you wanted to add?
No, nothing further. Again, you know, just to reiterate that, you know, I do understand the challenges that you're facing. And, you know, I'm going to do everything that I can to provide the best possible service at the most efficient price.
Anything else from the board? Is there a motion here?
I move that we approve the KP Law rate increase of $10 an hour to $235 an hour for general Town Council legal fees for FY '24.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Three to one. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Corbo. Appreciate you coming down this evening.
Thank you. It was good to see everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. At this point, we will go back a little bit to our 6:10 item, EverSource Poll Hearing for one new poll, poll number 9302/213.5 with anchor on Church Street in front of property on Assessor's Map 8-14-0-R. Thank you. If you could introduce yourself, please.
Certainly. Thank you. My name is Marissa Jackson from the EverSource Rights and Famits Department. What we're proposing this evening is the installation of 135-foot jointly-owned pole between EverSource and Verizon. The purpose of this construction is to mitigate an issue that we have with a low-hanging wire that is going over the neighboring property, their driveway. So we'd like to install the pole and fix those low-hanging wires. Additionally, we would need to include a guy and an anchor to further brace that pole.
The pole is not installed yet, correct?
It is not. I did a field visit to ensure it was not.
All right. Thank you. Are there any members of the public here tonight that would like to speak on this? Seeing none. Are there questions from the board?
I just have a question.
Sure. Joanne Jess, you want to come up to the microphone, please?
I purposely came, not to that, but I need this information.
Joanne, if you'd just speak into the microphone, please. Introduce yourself for the folks at home.
Joanna Layton for Wyndham Shore Drive in Carver. I've been here 50 years, all of which have been in that same house. There's a pole that starts on the street, which goes in my backyard and then makes a left to the other yard. I have been asking, EverSource, calling, never been able to find anybody to help me to resolve this issue. The people could be hooked up to the street now because so much time has gone by. If you don't mind, I would like to have your name and address or your name and number. And you could work with me or direct me personally.
Absolutely. On what to do. I'd be happy to do that. Once we take this off, I'm sorry, I can't comment further just because I'm not familiar with the area. But I'll give you my business card and we can address this tomorrow.
Okay. Who can I call? Cheryl?
Elaine.
I'm sorry, Elaine.
You can call Cheryl.
That's a trouble when you're, that's a trouble. You live in too long and you're 80 years old.
Joanna, I'll email you our community representative.
Would it be she?
No, his name is Ryan. And I will email you his information so you can contact him directly.
Okay.
You can also.
Absolutely. And I'll give you my card.
Well, that would be, I would like that also. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good. Thank you.
No problems.
Can I just make one further comment?
Sure.
I believe that on the petition we submitted, the stenciling of the poll number was a little different. I didn't know if that posed a problem.
Well, why don't we just correct it? What should the stenciling be?
Yes, thank you. It should be 29 over 7-C. And I followed through to make sure it's, you know, same property on the assessor's map. That it was just strictly the stenciling that was inaccurate.
Okay. Mr. Fantasy, I don't see any problem with that.
No, and that was corrected on the.
Perfect. Thank you. Just for the record.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the board?
So I guess if I may, I brought up Google Maps so we can see what's happening. So 14R is the house that's set in the back there. So the pole, there's actually a pole that's straight in line there. It's servicing number 12.
Exactly. And it goes right over the driveway.
Hanging low over the driveway to 14R. So you're going to put a pole in between? I can hear somewhere.
That is correct. I believe more to the left. And then, you know, we'll be able to move that wire.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Perfect. All right. Thank you. Anything else from the board?
When do you plan on doing this work?
Sure. Great question. What we'll do is, once we receive the approval documentation signed by everyone, we will get this directly to our construction department. And within 10 days, we'll be out there.
Anything else? Is there a motion on this?
Motion to approve the EverSource request for one new poll with anchor on Church Street.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
All right. Next this evening is a commercial garage public hearing. The applicant is MP Performance Engines located at 309 Tremont Street, Unit 1. Sir, welcome. If you could just introduce yourself for the folks at home.
My name's Matthew Malone.
All right, Matthew, if you could just tell us a little bit about what you're doing here?
So we rented the commercial property on 309 Tremont probably a few months back with the plans to open a shop there. And there's a small storefront, which is part of the property. It's not big. It's approximately 10 deep by 25 wide. So there will be small things in there, oils, filters, spark plugs, you know, maybe a couple of tires. The shop is about 25 by 65, which will have a few small motorcycle lift tables, compressor, oil storage, which is on a platform, a secondary oil containment, which was asked specifically by the planning board, which we did. We have the, planning board is on board. We have a second meeting next week. The business commissioner, is that Rod?
Building Commissioner.
Building Commissioner, yeah. He's on board. Jesse with the fire department. Everyone's on board. Of course, there will have to be a final inspection before we open. But we had a walk-around last week. Everybody loved it. I feel like at first, we kind of, we had a lot of questions because everyone on the board, I feel like they thought it was going to be like a massive, like a betting courts, you know, or like a pilgrim power sports. And it's not going to be that. It's a small, family-run business with a little bit, you know, a little storefront out front and basically very simple, into the point. I've been doing mechanical work over 20 years. I worked for a few different shops. And it was just, you know, it was about time to go legit. You know, I mean, right from the beginning, when we spoke with Jamie about this, Jamie Emerson, who owns the property, I told him right away, I'm like, listen, we want to do everything the way it needs to be done by the book. I don't want to play games. I don't want to be trying to fly under the radar like most people do. Whatever it costs, whatever I need to get, I will get. Simple as that. And that's kind of how we've been so far. We're about two months in, so we've been paying rent. We have full insurance for the property. I have workman's comp because my father and my fiance will be working there as well. I already have a dealer account with Automac Distributors in Bangor, Maine. We have a company called Weston Oil out of Rhode Island who comes and gets the used waste oil, waste fuel, and antifreeze. Yeah, I mean, everything's kind of in order. It's just a matter of, this would be contingent on what next week's meeting, how it goes. But it's looking like it'll be an okay. So.
All right. Are there any members of the public here tonight that would like to speak on this? All right, seeing none. You have a commercial general liability policy on this property?
I'm sorry, is that?
It's on the workers' comp policy.
I see workers' comp.
Anything else? That's why I asked. I was just concerned that if, is there insurance in place? If you mentioned you had waste oil on the property, if there was some kind of leak or something like that? That was my concern. That's why I asked.
I wasn't told that I had to get that. But if that's something I have to get, that's not a problem. I'll call about it tomorrow. Not an issue.
Apparently, the fire department is on board with their.
Yeah, they didn't mention anything. They told me like the secondary oil containment has to be. Because basically, like, a lot of shops, right? They get their oil shipped in 55-gallon stainless steel drums. They don't usually rot out. But in case something was to start to leak, obviously, you don't want that going into the concrete. The facility has a 1,000-gallon tight take. Uh, the facility has a thousand-gallon tight take. You wouldn't want that to go into the tight tank, so the secondary oil containment underneath, I was told, would be suitable to catch if anything leaked. But if it's something that we have to get, not a problem. We'll take care of it. I have no problem doing that.
Alright. Other questions from the board?
Is this the location up there?
That is, yes.
Is it, is the garage in the back of the building?
Yes.
Okay, so. Alright, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Alright, I believe the planning board has a site walk planned.
We had that last week.
Okay. And you said the planning board still hasn't issued their approval, right?
We have another meeting next week, yeah.
So, I think any motions we make here should be conditional upon planning board approval for this. Is there a, is there a motion here?
I move that we approve, uh, MP Performance Engines located at three oh nine Tremont Street, Unit One, contingent on planning board approval.
If I may, uh, also add, uh, and also obtaining, uh, insurance policy, liability and insurance policy.
Commercial general liability policy.
Okay.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you very much, sir.
Awesome, thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck, yeah.
Alright. Next this evening is a update on the housing production plan from our town planner, Tom Bott. Mr. Bott. Welcome. Thanks for joining us this evening.
Evening, Mr. Chairman. Thanks for having me here on the seventy-ninth anniversary of D-Day. So, uh, members of the board, I'm, I'm Tom Bott, I'm the town planner here in Carver, Mass, and I'm here to talk about our need to update the two thousand seventeen housing production plan. Uh, with the assistance of our partners at Serpent, uh, through a DLTA, which is a district local technical assistance grant. There's no out-of-pocket, uh, cost to the town of Carver. Uh, the HPP, as they're typically called, is one of several projects we're working on with Serpent, including completing the Open Space and Recreation Plan, and that's very near and dear to some people's hearts. Uh, updating Carver's two thousand seventeen priority development and priority protection area, and I have a second ask on that, uh, for that project, but not at this point. And later this summer, we'll be working with Serpent on a regional bicycle plan. Uh, and there is a survey. If folks want to take the survey on the bice, regional bicycle plan on Serpent's website as well. So, of the recent discussions, the town of Carver's had about a potential three hundred-plus Unit forty-B at Edaville, and the MBTA zoning bylaw has brought the longstanding issues with housing in Carver and the region more into focus and had me reach out to the good folks at Serpent, uh, the southeastern regional planning and economic development district, which is why they call it Serpent. We don't wanna say all those words all the time. Uh, this effort will be the third HPP, the first being in two thousand seven. It was completed in two thousand eight and adopted in two thousand nine. Housing production plans are good for five years, and Carver's present plan was completed in two thousand seventeen. To be valid, uh, they must be approved by the planning board, the select board, and by the state in the office recently known as DHCD. Uh, DHCD is now the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, indicating the import of housing here in the Commonwealth. Uh, previously, the state's housing and economic development agencies were combined together, but Governor Healy, uh, split housing into its own office and appointed a new housing secretary who reports directly to her. Uh, so, this is clearly, uh, on everyone's calendar and has been on everyone's focus for a while, but, um, the, the Commonwealth is looking to, uh, focus more on those things and hopefully provide some additional resources for towns. Uh, the principal reasons most towns do a housing production plan is in order to provide potential safe harbor for an unmooreded forty-B at some point in the future. So, the housing production plan is both, it is a plan to how we might create housing, and the production side of things is what gets you to a safe harbor, to try to get a town to that ten percent goal uh, that is required under, uh, Chapter forty-B. Uh, the difficult part for most towns is that production side of things. So, what we have to look at when we do the housing production plan going forward are what are those sort of strategies the town might employ to try to create additional housing and particularly additional affordable housing. Uh, the housing production plan right now relied on, uh, the potential for a number, a number of fortyBs providing that housing stock. But I don't believe we had a forty-B in quite some time. I think the last one I saw was some discussions in two thousand sixteen about a forty-B on Plymouth Street. So, we will have to work, uh, particularly diligently after a plan is created on how we get production to create additional housing units. Uh, for tonight is just to kickstart, to basically authorize, uh, the, the, the town to enter into a contract with, uh, Serpent through this DLTA grant, uh, to provide this assistance to us to develop a plan. That said, plan has to be provided, approved by the select board, has to be approved by the planning board, uh, and then goes to, uh, to the state for their approval. And one of the things that I had talked about with the town administrator previously is about, uh, involving, uh, our long-dormant, uh, local housing partnership. Uh, the select board created a housing partnership in two thousand nine to advise the town on affordable housing, uh, including foreclosures, homeownership, and potential fortyBs. Uh, the last time that group met, I think, was in two thousand fifteen. So, it may be one of those things we might look at in trying to focus our attention on housing, to take some of those, that, some of that, uh, sort of town infrastructure we have in place through people and, and organizations, uh, to incorporate them into this process of trying to develop, uh, the housing production plan. Uh, that is the general, uh, gist of what we're looking at doing, and I'd be happy to take any questions the board might have.
Thank you, Mr. Bott. Questions from the board? Ms. Jones?
So, is it possible for us to, um, take sites that are owned by the town and re- recreate, make new housing there? So, for example, the old fire station, not making a wonder.
Yeah, I, I, I think, uh, when we look at, uh, what's in, uh, and there's a, here's my plug for my other ask, the priority development areas. We look at what was in the master plan, we look at what's in the two thousand seventeen priority development areas. They identified areas, and they typically are all revolved around zoning, the town center zoning, the village zoning here uh, and other places. So, uh, the plans that we already have sort of target this area, but you look around and you go, where's the real estate for something like that? So, you look at redevelopment opportunities, not raw land, but there are redevelopment opportunities, including, uh, you know, the fire station next door. Uh, there's, uh, you know, a shopping center down the street that gets used on Sundays, part of the building. Uh, there's a, uh, and I'm not trying to kick anybody out of their properties, by the way, but these are just potential sites for this. There's a, uh, an EMT academy up the street. You know, we look at all those sort of things that have got a serious amount of pavement and, uh, the uses they have. You know, those are all potential for development, but that requires a developer to come in and, uh, and pursue those sort of things. Uh, so, where we look at doing housing at is one of those products of the housing production plan. Um, we'll look with, uh, Serpent on, the data they have on potential, uh, areas of, you know, uh, based on, uh, access soils and things like that to look at where those potential sites are. And like I said, in two thousand seven, we started it then. In two thousand eight, we were working on it. In two thousand nine, it was approved. So, it's not like an overnight process. We'll go back. This is an update, not a fresh new plan. Uh, two thousand seven was a fresh new plan. So, the updates tend to take a little bit longer, but there needs to be some community engagement in looking at those sites and, and having some public meetings and talk about where we wanna do housing and what kind of housing we wanna do. For the most part, what we see in affordable housing are fortyBs. And the default for a fortyB are three-bedroom, single-family detached housing. Uh, because that's what builders build, that's what banks loan on. Uh, but most of the housing production plans I've seen here and in other places say the need for housing are more one- and two-bedroom units for families that are just beginning, uh, for folks who are selling their house and moving out and downsizing. Uh, but the market doesn't necessarily provide those sort of things through fortyB. So, other mechanisms such as inclusionary housing bylaw, a potentially fortyR, and these are all the sort of strategies we'll be talking about during the production of the housing production plan. So, if it's in Carver, uh, it's subject to the conversation, is that a good site for housing? And, uh, why or why not?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ryan?
Did we have any, uh, feedback or results from the two thousand and seventeen plan that was, uh, provided before? Uh, did you have a chance to look at that and have we implemented any parts of that?
Yeah, so, uh, so we're always looking at zoning. I think one of the things that the town recently did is updated their TDR bylaw. Uh, but when we look at, uh, what was zoning in two thousand seventeen and what is zoning now, uh, and we look at those types of housing stock that people may not have considered. People think of, you know, your single-family house as the housing stock. But looking at amending our zoning bylaws, amending, and looking at other opportunities like that is, is part of that process. Typically, after the plan, then we look at going to town meeting and look at what that zoning might be. Obviously, the MBTA zoning bylaw is one of those things that's held a, sort of a, a shadow over, uh, much of eastern Massachusetts, uh, and has provoked, uh, a great amount of consternation from a lot of towns. Uh, not that we're necessarily looking at building something to the scale of that, but in the midst of that, we'll be looking at all those options. Uh, whether the, some proportion of the MBTA bylaw is appropriate for sections of this, uh, for, of town or other mechanisms as well.
So, once the new plan is created, who would be responsible for overseeing that it gets executed? Uh, who, who kinda oversees the plan and follows through on the action items that are identified?
That would be, that would be us.
Okay.
Uh, the, the town of Carver. And there are a number of different mechanisms for that. Uh, one of the things that, uh, some towns do is they will create a local housing trust. And that local housing trust may have the authority to use CPA funds to purchase a piece of property. We see pieces of property that come onto the market occasionally on, under, uh, under sixty-one A, that there's a hundred-and-twenty-day period to decide if the town wants to, uh, submit to something like that. Well, one of the mechanisms a lot of towns have used is a local housing trust and authorize them to make a purchase of property using CPA funds. From purchasing that piece of property, the town may then look at doing an RFP to a private developer to develop housing that we'd like to see it on our terms. So, those are some of the tools that are available in who puts together the plan, who administers the plan, who helps to implement the plan. It's us and the mechanisms that we have through CPA, through local housing trust, through the planning, through the, uh, planning board, and, uh, perhaps the local housing, uh, partnership as well.
The last question is, what's the timeline from when they start to having it completed?
Uh, I don't have that directly in front of me, but I'm thinking that we're probably looking at about, uh, a, a year of that because it's an update. Uh, much of the work has been done before, so we're gonna be looking at updating it with the new census data. Uh, and, uh, Serpent has invested quite a bit in, uh, data layers and things like that. It helped to make, uh, better analysis decisions. GIS is not just for making maps. It's about making, asking fundamental, uh, spatial questions about, uh, how can we do this and where can we do that at?
And, and, Mr. Bott, you said, um, I know we did have a local housing partnership, but that met last in two thousand fourteen or two thousand fifteen?
Uh, the last meeting agenda I have is from December fourteenth, two thousand fifteen, and the last minutes I have are from, uh, September of, uh, two thousand fifteen. So, it's, it's been a while.
I would definitely like to see that started again because they would be the real working arm to move this forward.
Yeah, if you look at our website right now, so listen on the website, there are five members on the site. The website says there could be as many as nine members, uh, for the housing, uh, local housing partnership, but that's about, uh, you know, uh, creating and, and reinvigorating that group.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board? Mr. Carter?
Yep. Um, when the plan is complete, just following some Dan's questions with regards to action items, our number for affordables is over three hundred, right?
Correct.
Yeah. So, so I don't know if doing the, the foreclosed properties, the CPA, the ones and twosies, get, do, do anything. If you did thirty a year, you'd need over ten years to get to it.
Correct.
So, do you see this plan going out five, ten, fifteen, twenty years to get to the affordable threshold?
Well, typically, uh, under a housing production plan, the state gives you credit for units you create, whether you build them or not right away. So, uh, we may have a, a, a development. Let's say that, uh, somebody does a fortyB and it's thirty units, and thirty may be our magic number for each year. Uh, so, at that point, uh, you would have, uh, thirty units of housing production that would add to that. I always advise towns, uh, don't be hung up on getting to ten percent because ten percent is an ephemeral number. When we get to the twenty, thirty census, they're gonna count all the housing stock again. So, we get to that magic ten percent in two thousand twenty-nine and the twenty, thirty census comes along and there's now an extra hundred units that we don't have, uh, that percentage for, then we're susceptible to the next fortyB. Uh, I always advise, make as many affordable housing units as you can, uh, that, uh, because people need a place to live. Absolutely, uh, the people who, uh, who are teachers, the people who are firefighters, the incoming employees in the town and other folks like that, uh, you know, they need a place to live. Uh, we don't have to hit them all. Uh, create as many housing units as you can that serve the needs of the people who are in, in need of that housing. And I think the answer to this is a no, but do you see any movement with the state recognizing our, um, immobile home community as affordable units? Uh, I will, uh, I will forecast, uh, an emphatic no.
Alright, thank you. Anything else from the board? Mr. Bott, do you have anything to add?
Uh, no, not at all, uh, but if, uh, if you authorize, uh, Mr. Fennessy to, uh, execute the contract with, uh, eight, uh, with Serpent, uh, then we will, uh, start things in, uh, in the works and we'll, uh, you know, look at, uh, putting together the program for how we're gonna go about updating the plan.
Do we need a motion for that?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize Mr. Fennessy to do what Mr. Bott just said.
To execute the DLTA contract.
To update our housing production plan.
Execute the contract, yeah.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bott. We appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you all very much. Enjoy.
Thanks, sir. Alright, next on our agenda this evening is a discussion, a possible vote to approve appropriation of monies less than fifty thousand dollars to pay debt service. I believe we have our finance director, Ms. Moklin, here with us this evening. Thank you for joining us. Alright, could you tell us a little bit about this, please?
So, we have some projects, um, you have listed in front of you that we went out and we borrowed for. And now we're paying down on the debt, but we overborrowed for, um, uh, obviously, it's not a lot of money. It encompasses fifty thousand dollars, but it's over a numerous amount of projects. The projects are completed, so the money that we borrowed needs to be reallocated to pay down debt, rather than just sitting on the books.
Okay, so, do we know what debts we're gonna be paying down?
My suggestion would be to take the, it's, it's a total of fifty thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars and thirteen cents, would be to pay it down on the fire engines, where that's the shortest. That goes out to twenty twenty-six and it's a hundred and seventy-five thousand a year. So, if we reduce the principal by fifty thousand, it's gonna help us out on that debt for the next three, uh, four years. Three years.
I'm, I'm sorry, maybe I, I'm just not reading what I have in front of me correctly here. So, you said there was a total of fifty thousand?
Yes.
So, that would be the total of all the accounts up there at the top?
That's correct.
Okay, so, what are the two on the bottom?
The two on the bottom are over fifty thousand, so in order to use those, you have to go to town meeting. And town meeting needs to reallocate it for something of the same purpose. So, it would have to be for, if we were going to, let's say that was a five-year borrowing on roof, then we have to do something that's a five-year borrowing on something that's building. So, that can be reused for something else, but it cannot be reused to pay down the debt.
Okay. Alright, any questions from the board?
So, it sounds like you have a recommendation to apply the total. Do we have to vote on them one by one?
No, I think you can go with the total because you have it, you know, uh, posted there.
And that total was fifty thousand, eight, thirteen, and?
Fifty thousand, eight, ten, and thirteen cents.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Fennessy, do you have a recommendation? Is that, do you, do you agree with that, that we can vote it in total, or would you?
Yeah, you could, uh, because we'll attach this to the vote, also the, the schedule.
Alright, and do we need to vote to allocate those monies to certain projects?
Yes.
Yes, you, you would, if you use, go with her a recommendation, you would have it allocated to that, that line item.
Okay.
So, there are options we wanna consider, or is that the, the one?
There, there's other options, the, in the sheet that you have here, that has all of our outstanding debt. The ones that are in yellow are non-excluded debt, so that's coming off of our, um, available revenue. The one that's in pink is being raised by taxation. The middle high school track in gray, that's through CPA, and then the ones that are in blue are through North Carver Water District. So, if you wanted to choose something, I would suggest something that's on the non-excluded debt, which is in yellow, if you don't wanna go with the fire engines.
And, and your recommendation is the fire engines?
Yes.
Okay.
I guess I'll, I'll move that, uh, we authorize fifty thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars and thirteen cents from the ending balances of the accounts such listed towards the, uh, fire engine debt.
Yes, I'll second that.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moklin.
Thanks, sir.
Alright, next this evening is a discussion, a possible vote to approve a payment in lieu of taxes agreements uh, for the following, uh, Carisage, Carver, fourteen R West Street. Uh, personal property address, uh, real estate parcel ID, assessor's map seventy-four, lot eight, uh, twenty West Street. Mr. Roach, thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you. Um, so, at town meeting in April, uh, the town authorized, um, you know, town meeting, uh- authorized the town to execute four pilots, three of which were renegotiated, existing pilots, one was new. Kearsage is the last of the three that were renegotiated. So this is very similar to GLCMA and Ravenbrook that we've looked at over the last couple of months where it's backing out the real estate amount. It tacked on a couple extra years escalating at two and a half percent and just sort of standardized it and made it more consistent with the current law. If you have any questions, I'm happy to ask, answer them.
All right, other questions on the board on this? No? No one? We're good? Okay. Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the payment in lieu of taxes agreement for Kearsage Carver, fourteen R West Street.
Second.
A motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Roach.
Thank you. And the last one, Sincarfa, I'm hoping that the Board of Assessors will sign it. Hopefully, June fifteenth we'll get it and then be back sometime early July to do the last one.
All right, great. Thank you.
Sorry, quick question. With abatements, does this cure the issue that you were having with abatements for the solo, the solo fields?
This one, I believe so. All these will be withdrawn from the ATB, so all those cases go away. And the abatements have already been issued. No refunds were given. The abatements that were granted just sort of evened out the payment schedule for what they overpaid. It zeroed it out.
Great. Does that help us with free cash?
We'll see it in free cash the next year.
All right, thank you. Next, we have applications for appointments to the Agricultural Commission. Michael Paddock and Richard Ward, the Carver Cultural Council, Mary Haleskowitz, the Earth Removal Committee, Michael Harrison and Richard Ward, the Recreation Committee, Caprice DeRosa and Jackie Lake, and appointment of special police officers, Patrick Charette, Jim Moscato, Michael O'Donnell, Peter Allegrini, Scott Sampson, Christopher Mahoney, Robert Pike, Cheryl Rizzuto and Scott Peterson. Mr. Fantasy, am I correct, these are all reappointments?
The, on, if I can have the chief come up for a second. On Christopher Mahoney, he's in the academy right now.
Yep, he got left on by accident. He is in the academy to become a full-time police officer, so.
Okay, so Mr. Mahoney should be removed from the list?
Yes.
All right.
I have a question.
And if you can answer his question, are these all just reappointments?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Hewens?
I just have a question. Can we move to appoint all of them en masse or do we need to appoint them individually?
I would do it by category.
Okay.
By each committee.
Yeah, okay. So I move that we appoint, reappoint Mike Paddock and Richard Ward to the Agricultural Commission?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you.
I move that we appoint Mary Alaskewitz, sorry, to the Carver Cultural Council.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you.
I move that we reappoint Michael Harrison and Richard Ward to the Earth Removal Committee.
Second.
All right, you have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous.
I move that we appoint Caprice DeRoche and Jackie Lake to the Recreation Committee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you.
And I move that we reappoint Patrick Charette, Jim Moscato, Michael O'Donnell, Peter Allegrini, Scott Sampson, Robert Pike, Cheryl Rizzuto and Scott Peterson as special police officers.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. All right, thank you. Next, we have the appointment to the Plymouth County OPEB Trust Program, Other Post-Employment Benefits. Mr. Fantasy, do you have some background on this?
Right now, and if you read the letter that came, it says that the, on June thirtieth, the term of the town, school and special district administrator will expire and that the requesting that we provide the name of the individual who serves in this role at your agency. We don't have anybody serving in this role.
Right, this is one person for the entire Plymouth County, correct? Not one person per town, is it?
I believe it's one person represented by the town.
Oh, okay.
Now, you're on the advisory.
I am on the advisory board, yeah.
So it said who may wish to be elected to the committee for this position. So is anybody who is willing to step up?
I'll do it if nobody wants to. I'm already doing the Plymouth County Advisory Board, so, but the pleasure of the board. I don't, if somebody else wants to do it, they're welcome to do it.
Just curious, what's involved?
Don't know much about it. I think it just, it's the OPEB that they handle. It's kind of being a watchdog over it.
I think it involves the investment, so I think it's the investment.
It's healthcare for retirees.
Okay, yep.
Somebody else is interested.
I was more referring to like how many meetings a year.
Oh, I don't know. I would assume it's quarterly, but I shouldn't assume, but, yeah, didn't get much info, but.
Yeah, no, there wasn't much information there. If anyone else is interested, they're certainly welcome to do it. If not, I'll, I'll do it.
Congratulations.
No, thank you.
You want to make a motion to appoint?
I move that we appoint Mark Townsend to the Plymouth County OPEB Trust Fund.
Second. That was too quick.
Discussion, discussion, discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, let's see. Discussion, a possible vote to approve the Plymouth County Retirement Association, five percent local cost of living adjustment option. Mr. Fantasy, I know you asked the Plymouth County Treasurer to attend the meeting tonight. I guess he wasn't behind it. He wasn't available to attend. Do you have a little background?
Yeah, so this is the, there was a movement that went around through the counties to increase the COLA, cost of living, increase for retirees from three percent to five percent this year. And that is only on the base, the first sixteen thousand dollars of the retirees' pension. It's not on, if their pension is fifty thousand, it's still only, it only goes up that additional two percent on that first sixteen thousand. So it's not as great as it may sound. And when you read this, the Social Security Administration granted a five point nine percent in twenty twenty-two and eight point seven in twenty twenty-three. But remember that most retirees in a municipal facet, they don't receive, they either don't receive any social security benefits, financial benefits, or they're reduced greatly with the windfall provision. So it offsets what they get as their retiree and from the municipal retiree system to what they would get normally if you were just to retire from a business, say, from social security. So the movement, it was passed by the Plymouth County Commissioners, the, and the Retirement Commission to move it forward. It's going to each town. They need two-thirds of the vote for it to pass of, two-thirds of the towns to vote in favor of this in order to make it, make it a law, basically. So it's before you to either make a motion to approve the three to the five percent increase for this year. And again, it's only on the first sixteen thousand dollars or to deny it. And then I would have to notify the county ASAP. It has to be done by the end of this fiscal year.
The thoughts or questions on the board? What would be the impact of the town?
It's, again, I don't have a figure unless Sue, when she leave. I'd ask her to see if she could get a figure. But I think the average cost would be somewhere about four hundred dollars per retiree in additional income for the year.
Do we know how many retirees we have? Roughly? No? Okay.
For some reason, I'm thinking of around eight hundred or something.
So to Mr. Ryan's question, is it a budgetary issue? Do we have the money?
Yeah, it would come out of our uncompensated funds.
And this is for retirees in the entire Plymouth County, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, the questions on the board?
Well, this seemed, I'd like firm financials exactly what the costs, closer than the estimates. It'd be good to have a full board too here when we vote this in.
But you can't because, again, it has to be voted by the end of the fiscal year, which is the end of June, so it.
Yeah, well, it needs to be voted by June thirtieth, correct?
Yeah.
So we do have another meeting on the second.
I thought you weren't doing another meeting.
No, in July and August, we're not having two meetings, but in June, we're having two meetings.
Okay.
So we do have another meeting on June twentieth.
Do you want to table this and?
We could, we could table it to June twentieth and still have time, right?
Okay, just so you know, I won't be here on June twentieth.
Okay. That's fine. Yeah, I think, because we go to the summertime, we only have one meeting in July and August. I think we need to have that second meeting in, in June.
Okay, so.
All right, why don't we table that to June twentieth?
And I'll contact Tom O'Brien too to try and get him here to commit to that, either he or somebody else.
Or at least if we can get the numbers from Ms. Mokwen about what the financial impact is. I think that would be helpful to the, to the board. All right. Town Administrator update. Mr. Fantasy?
Okay. So first, I want to welcome the Carver High School students. I see probably fifteen to twenty in here today doing their community service. A very exciting night for you guys, right? I'm sure. It's, so thank you. See me after the meeting and I'll give you your get out of jail free card. Couple of things on the projects, as I'm sure you know from looking at it, the town hall siding is completed. The painting's been completed. The next on the, on this project here is the cement walkway leading up to the main entrance here. You may have noticed that it's cracked and broken in pieces and so forth, so that's all being replaced. And it's also going to have the visually impaired alert pads on it. So somebody who comes in who's visually impaired can, can feel their way in, so. And also, I want to mention that the, the front of the building, which is actually not the entrance, but the front will have on the front, the signage will say Carver Town Hall in the same kind of font and color as it's on the side. So that'll dress that up too. I think they did a great job on the, on the project. Looks great. I've got so many compliments from many people from the community and from the town hall itself, so. So great job for Dave and John and the crew putting that together. Town Library, a new HVAC system installation is still ongoing and it'll possibly be completed and running by the end of this month or early July. The contractor has noted that he's experienced equipment delays, which are outside of their control, but they've been communicating with Dave to keep him updated on the status. So it's moving along. Couple other things at the Council on Aging, Atwood House. You may see new hand railings that are being installed along the walkways from the parking lot up to the main entrance with additional railings going along the walkway leading to the parking lot stairs. This will also have a low guard rail for any, anybody in a wheelchair. That'll, that'll block them from going under the railings. This was funded through a grant from the state. Once that work, the initial installation work is done, it'll be painted. I believe it's going to be painted kind of a glossy white outside paint, so. So it'll look a little nicer than it looks right now. Right now, it looks industrial because it's all, you know, it's just the steel. Also, with the COA, with the assistance from the Massachusetts Department of Corrections, the front of the building has been pressure washed and has been painted as needed. The next thing that they'll be doing is painting the large circular window above the nutrition center and the wooden deck and make note of the wooden decking and stair treads were replaced on one of the egress areas that had some issues. The new ductless mini-split HVAC systems are scheduled to be installed in the nutrition center the week of June twenty-sixth, and they'll be in. So things are moving along there. Again, good job on the O and M department getting these things moving. Work on expanding the central cemetery is ongoing. O and M is actually hauling in loam to, to put in. They're currently soliciting prices for grading and paving of the roadway in the cemetery. So that's moving along. Next thing on my list, North Carver Water District. I'm sure people want to hear that. On June first, a switch over with North Carver Water District occurred. Moving from Middleborough Water to Carver Water for the district. Over that time, there were a few minor hiccups, but overall, the North Carver Water District has been pleased with the switch over process. The Commissioner has advised that there's still maybe some discoloration of the water, but it's safe and are looking into resolving that concern through their operations company, Small Water Systems. And I did get a message from the Chairman, Mr. Palomari, that things look better with the water. They're working on the, the different chemicals that are going into the water to purify it. So, so that's moving along. Also in personnel matters, a new sealer of weights and measures. And some people may have noticed that some of these stickers are outdated. We did have a sealer of weights and measures who, who had been on for a number of years here. I've never met him, but he had left. He had retired. So a new sealer is coming in. His name's Charles Norvish. He's been the sealer of weights and measures in Middleborough for many, many years. Very, very well-informed on what he has to do and gung ho to get, get it done. It's almost a wash in terms of how much we bring in for the, for the seal, ceiling and weight, weights and what we're paying him. So, so it's, it's about a thousand dollars difference in, in terms of the difference that we pay out. We're also preparing to hire for the new positions that were funded at annual town meeting for the Veterans Assistant and the Assessors Data Collector. Those, those have been advertised. We're getting applications in. And also, we're getting applications in on the IT, the townside IT manager. So, so those are moving forward. And interviews are beginning next week for the police dispatcher position. So, so that's good. Finally, the volunteers are gearing up for Carver Home Day, which will be on July twenty-ninth. So get your tickets early if you're planning to attend. I went to my first Carver Home Day last year, had a great time, and we plan on being there again this year, so. So, so that's my update.
Just one, one follow-up on the North Carver Water District. Have we, have we established a contact or here at town hall? So if people have an issue, they can, they can contact them?
Yeah, and that's John Ball in Operations and Management Department. If, if you have a situation, obviously, first call the North Carver Water District or the Small Waters Systems if it's a problem.
And would Mr. Ball be the one who would be responsible going forward if there is going to be an issue? We know the water's going to be shut down for a couple of hours or if they're going to be flushing or what have you. He would be the one who would be responsible?
Yeah, he and, and out of Dave's and, and also through the, the Building Department. That's a combination of things, but he'll kind of coordinate that.
Okay. And do we know, I remember one thing that came out of the meeting that we had with all the residents was that we were going to establish a reverse nine-one-one system, I think, where we could make those calls. Do we know if we've gotten everybody's information on that?
Yeah, I think it's, they've had some problems doing that because there's certain things, I'm not sure what the tie-up was, but there were issues that they were having trying to put that together. And, you know, we'll follow through and see where it stands.
Okay, only because we know that was, that's one, I think, one of the things that came out of that. That was a big concern of the residents, that, that we tried to get them notified and so that was just a concern I had.
And I might want to just mention, since we're talking about the North Carver, now, North Carver Water District and Middleborough, a contingent of the Select Board and myself and. District and Middleborough, a contingent of the Select Board and myself, and the Chairman of the North Carver Water District, Mike Palomary, we all visited the town, the Select Board meeting in Middleborough last night to offer our thanks, sincere thanks, for helping the town in such a critical situation.
I was going to mention that in my Select Board notes, but I guess.
Oh, sorry.
That's all right. Everything else in my Select Board notes has been checked off already, so we just checked that off too. But I really appreciated everyone coming last night. I did hear from a couple of people in Middleborough, from Middleborough today, that they really appreciated us.
Yeah, I think it was nice having so many there to show that what we, that we do care and we appreciate it, so.
Thank you. All right.
Do you have a question through that chair? So back to the sealer of weights and measures. So I think what you were saying is the fees, so this fee is charged, and you're saying we're short about $1,000.
Correct.
Do we know the last time the fees were raised?
No, and I can't get a handle on it. It was one of those things where this person was allowed to just do it on his own. And I think he was, I think the fees were going to him.
So does it make sense to have the fees aligned with the cost of the position, so that at least it comes out equal?
So I don't know if the fees are set by the state, or, and I can check that.
Okay.
And see if we can increase them.
And just to follow up with that, for historical purposes, I think way back when, I think the Board of Health Agent was paid a stipend to be the sealer of weights and measures.
Oh, were they?
Anything else?
No, sorry. Can I go back to the North Carver Water District with the water discoloration? It's been a week, right? So should we be concerned, number one? Number two, if it's not cured in a week, do we have a problem?
Yeah, so the water coming out of the treatment plant is pure and clear. It's when it hits the tanks and going through the piping is where it's picking it up. And it may be a situation, from what I understand, I'm not an expert, maybe a situation from the chemical changeover from Middleborough, which is fluorinated, and the others, the chemicals that we use hitting each other that might be still infused in the system. So it's moving, and, you know, and again, not again, but we suggest that people flush their water as much as possible.
Flush the water, yeah.
Yep, to get it through and get it through. We're going to actually, Mike had suggested opening the hydrants too, to try and move it a little faster.
So, thank you. All right, thank you. Anything else? Okay. Let's see. Minutes, licenses, topics not reasonably anticipated by the Chair, 48 hours in advance of the meeting. We have the minutes of May 2nd, 2023. Is there a motion? Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. And we have the minutes of May 16th, 2023.
Motion to approve minutes as of May 16, 2023.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion? All hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
And I'll abstain, since I wasn't at that meeting. All right, we have the executive session minutes of May 12th, 2023. Approval and not for release.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve and not, approve and not for release. Approve and not release. Is there a second?
Yes, second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. We have the Old Home Day Road Race, July 29th, from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. 7:00 a.m. to 9:30 a.m. Sorry, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the Old Home Day Road Race.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? It is unanimous. We have a request for one-day special licenses by RTJ Concessions Incorporated at Edoville Railroad for July 7th, 8th, 14th, 15th, 21st, 22nd, 28th, and 29th, from 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Is there a motion on this? Motion to approve? We have a motion to approve. Is there a second? I'll second it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Sorry, I had to recuse myself.
I know you do. So we have a motion and a second. Discussion?
Who seconded it, Mark?
I did.
Or Sarah?
Okay. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? And you're accusing yourself, correct, Mr. Carter?
Yep.
All right, thank you. And let's see. We have a request for one-day special licenses, wine and malt only, for RTJ Concessions Incorporated at Edoville Railroad for November 9th, 10th, 11th, 12th, 16th, 17th, 18th, 19th, 24th, 25th, 26th, and 30th, also December 1st, 2nd, 3rd, 7th, 8th, 9th, 10th, 14th, 15th, 16th, 17th, 21st, 22nd, 23rd, 24th, 28th, 29th, 30th, and 31st, from 2:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Carter, are you recusing yourself?
I'm recusing myself.
All right, thank you. Let's see, we have a request for a one-day special license, all alcoholic, for the St. John the Baptist Club at 53 Silver Street on June 23rd and 24th, from noon to 11:00 p.m.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Unanimous? Thank you. We have a request for one-day special licenses, all alcoholic, from Renaissance Foods Limited, D B A, King Richard's Fair, for September 2nd, 3rd, 4th, 9th, 10th, 16th, 17th, 23rd, 24th, 30th, and October 1st, 7th, 8th, 9th, 14th, 15th, 21st, and 22nd. And Mr. Fennessy, I believe we heard from the Police Department that everything's set as far as their concerns.
Yeah, okay. Yes, on that end, but on the other end, regarding emergency medical services. If you approve this, I would ask that it be approved contingent on them having a certified, certified first aid and CPR person. Because right now, they don't have anybody set up. So either do it at a contingency to that, or you can put this off until the July meeting. Yeah, I think putting it off is better too, because it gives them a little more time to get that in order. Because we'd like to have everything in order before we approve these.
Right, so do you think this would be ready to go for the June 20th agenda?
Maybe. If not.
Well, let's tentatively put it off till June 20th, and we'll see.
Yeah, and if we don't have it, they need till July.
Yeah, our next meeting after that is not till July 18th, so.
So either that. I mean, they don't start till the fall anyway, so.
Okay. Okay, that's fine. We'll delay that.
Hold that.
And finally, we have a request for use of the town property, the Town Hall gazebo, by the Carver Girl Scouts on June 9th, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Move that we approve the request for use of town property.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. Select Board announcements. Mr. Ryan?
I was going to ask when the Carver Farmers Market starts up.
Usually starts first Sunday in June.
Pretty soon, yeah.
Just wanted to remind people, it's a great place to visit when you can, and also, I guess have a safe summer. We'll be meeting beginning, oh, so we'll be meeting just before summer starts.
We'll meet June 20th is our next meeting, and then we'll also be meeting July and August.
I'll save that one for.
Okay. Mr. Carter?
Just a reminder, the Jack Winley Memorial Scholarship Cornhole Tournament is this Saturday, June 10th, at the Sportsman's Club. Starts at 12 o'clock. I believe there's still openings. Should be a fun event.
All right. Ms. Hewens?
Yeah, I just wanted to remind people again about Old Home Day, which is always the last Saturday in July, and this year, that Saturday is the 29th. It starts off with the road race, starts at 7:00 a.m. And Old Home Day Association has a website, so if you're interested in being in the road race, or purchasing tickets, or anything like that, you can go to their website. There's lots of fun stuff going on at Old Home Day, and there's a clam bake at 1:00, which is not to miss.
Absolutely, thank you. Okay. And for myself, just a reminder, as Mr. Johnson mentioned, to start the meeting, the Carver Sportsman's Club is holding their 2023 Scholarship Breakfast on Saturday morning, June 21st, from June 24th, from 7:30 to 11:00 a.m. in the morning at the Carver Sportsman's Club, and that's always a great, great place to attend. And I just want to congratulate all our 2023 Carver graduates from whatever school you graduated from. Congratulations. So finally, our next meeting will be on June 20th, and is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? It is unanimous. We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you, Area 58.